Welcome, everybody, to the Zone Board Meeting of November 12, 2024. My name is Marty Akins. I'm the Chairman. It's the Vice Chairman, Mr. Ray Dell. Board members, Mr. Chin, Mr. Frankel, Mr. O'Brien, Ms. Barry here, our Clerk, Mrs. Griffin, and the Director, Mr. Conlon is behind me. You got a cell phone or pager? Could you put it on vibrate? Trying to interrupt the meeting.
I think we can leave the pager off.
Leave the pagers off.
I don't know if anybody has one, so I don't know if they need them.
As I have, as I said for four years.
When was the last time we saw them?
Couple of weeks ago. The kid, he says, what the hell is this?
Was it after?
No, it was looking at my headphones. If anyone's going to testify tonight, could you please stand up? I want you to take an oath that you tell the truth. Mr. Chin?
Yes.
If you're not going to take an oath, you're not going to testify. So if no one's going to take an oath, no one's going to testify.
If you're going to speak tonight, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matters now in hearing? Thank you.
Right now, Mr. Timmons, you'd like to address. You hear correct?
Yeah.
He's out there. All right.
Taking a call.
I guess.
Somebody grab him?
I'll give him a minute. We're just waiting. Mr. Timmons has something to tell the board tonight about an open meeting law. Yeah, go get him. Mr. Timmons, I know you want to talk to the board tonight. Thank you very much.
Apologize.
You have the floor. No, that's fine. I know you're a busy guy.
Thank you. I'm here on another open meeting law complaint. It's quite similar to one we dealt with back in the spring. I'll just turn it around. I got taped. Just leave it alone. It's very similar to the one we dealt with in the spring, but the circumstances are a little different. The October 8 meeting, everything seemed to go fine. The complaint is about the minutes, and I noted when I came in that each of you were present at that meeting, so that's a good thing. The complaint about the minutes, there are two. One of them is that there's an item in the minutes that says that a neighbor spoke about the matter, but it doesn't specify what the neighbor said, meaning a summary of issues. Now, the person who complained indicated that it was parking and density. So my suggestion, do you folks have, you have the complaint in front of you? So I'm in the fourth full paragraph. My suggestion on that one is that perhaps we do amended minutes and we just add the term in paragraph 12, that the gentleman spoke in concern of this project raising parking and density issues. So you'd have amended minutes that address the concern here.
All right, so when we, she has the minutes, they're amended, we'll do it next meeting?
I beg your pardon?
We do that next meeting when we get the new agenda minutes?
No, we can, I was going to talk it through now.
Okay.
And then, and then if you designate me to respond.
Yep.
Then, yeah, we'll prepare amended minutes and I'll do the response.
Very good.
And then the next, I mean, this is not crisis level stuff.
No, I know.
Fortuitously.
I know.
As you can see by the first solution. The second question talks about something involving Mr. O'Brien, which stunned me, given the clean living history I'm aware of. But there's some talk about you clarifying the existence of a prior ZBA case for this Newcombe Road, and do you recall doing that at the last meeting?
I raised the issue because we had.
Yeah, I might ask you this.
We had, at a previous meeting a couple of years ago, we had approved a building on that site, and I recalled it, but I didn't know the specifics. I was curious if they were the same parties that were coming back to change what we had approved, and a clarification that I had gotten was this was a different group.
So you didn't raise any particular issues that impacted your decision on the project? It wasn't about the merits of the project before you?
No, no, no.
It was just clarifying, so?
Yeah, just information for the prior approval for the specific site. I guess what happened is they, we had approved a building there. They never built it.
Right.
So a different group came back and with a different plan, and I just needed, I just was looking for clarification.
Okay. Do you recall, because this is one of the complaints in the letter, the minutes do not reflect what the clarification was. Was it clarified for you that there was a prior matter? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so maybe we'll, we'll add that in. And then, did you clarify it with Mr. Conlon or in some other manner? Was it with the board?
Just in general, I think I opened it.
It was?
You weren't here.
I think there was a group.
You, it was kind of clarified to me, and then we asked if it was the same group representing them.
Okay.
That was what I recall.
The lawyer spoke about it as well.
Correct. The lawyer had said it was a different, it was same ownership, but different group that had prepared the.
All right. Well, we could maybe clean that up a tiny bit, that element of the minutes, which, for whatever reason, was a concern for this individual. What I'm thinking is this, like normally, I would perhaps say, there's not much for us to talk about and there's nothing to worry about. But back in the spring, it was discussed that we needed to maybe do a better job on the minutes, and that's something that I've been working with, with Madam Clerk, who's done an excellent job, as you know.
Yeah.
New to the game, but she's very quickly caught on to things. So regrettably, we are in a world today where this type of thing's going on a lot. If you knew, we're getting pounded here at City Hall, as are other municipal people in other municipal halls, with public records requests, with open meeting law violation I'm hopeful that it's just an interesting, good government, but it isn't always. Sometimes you can just tell who you're dealing with and that people are out to, you know, raise a little bit of turbulence, which is really regrettable, and it takes time. It takes our time. We've got a public waiting to deal with zoning matters now. But rather than get in and battle this and get into detail that you've done nothing wrong here, I'm going to take in good faith that this person thinks the minutes weren't clear enough and perhaps didn't explain enough on these two things. So we will add two words to item 12 and maybe a phrase to item 13, and we'll publish amended minutes. And as you said, we'll have them available at the next meeting.
Okay.
And you can make them part of the record. And I think that's a great way to just move along. And what I will do, if it's agreeable, and I'd ask for a motion from someone on this, if you would designate me to respond to the complainant, and the little note that I send to the complainant goes to the Attorney General as well.
Brian, make a motion, please.
Yeah, make a motion for the city solicitor to respond to the complaint, to both the complainant and the Attorney General.
Second.
On the motion, standing on all in favor?
Aye.
All right, close, I'm moved.
All right, well, thank you for your time. This is something we'll clear right up, and I appreciate it. I didn't mean to cause you any concern because, yeah, good, very good. All right. Thank you very much, and I'll work with Madam Clerk. We'll take care of this.
And in the Madam Clerk's, sometimes that thing might glitch a quick second when someone says something loud or not loud enough and it don't pick it up. So that's probably where it is. It just never got picked up or never got picked up on the TV minutes.
Yeah, we're definitely moving in a good direction here with all this.
We are, we are, and everything's going well now.
Thank you.
There's no malice at all involved anywhere.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Night. Thank you.
Have a good night tonight.
Thank you for taking me out of order.
Good, good. All right, on ZBA, I'm going to go to.
Hold on, do you want to start here?
No.
All right.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Make a motion, accept, wash.
Yeah, sure. Mr. Chairman, to make a motion to accept and waive the reading of the minutes for the regularly scheduled meeting of October 22, 2024.
Second.
On the motion, standing on all in favor?
Aye.
Close, I'm moved. I'm going to take something out of water because someone has to go upstairs to the council and meet with them. So I'm going to take ZBA 2467 lot six, James Callahan for finding special permit flood plan to demolish the existing single-family dwelling and replace it with a new flood compliant single-family dwelling on the premise number 179 Huckins Ave. The applicant representative here. Mr. LaRoche, you're up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brian LaRoche, 67 Mirzav in Quincy, here to represent the applicant, James Callahan, Callanan. This 179 Huckins Ave has been before you. There was case number Z19-43 that was concluded in August 13, 2019, and that was a developer that was coming in to demolish an existing single-family home and build a new single-family home on this site. At the conclusion of the zoning process, there was negotiations that went between the director butter, my client, James Callanan, to purchase the property. So he did purchase the property in 2020, and then COVID hit, so things have been on hold for a little while. And now we're before you with a new proposed design. So this proposal that we have before you is no new conformities are going to be created with this design, similar to what you approved before, and it is a fully flood compliant dwelling. We're in an AE14 zone, and we will be fully flood compliant. So we'll be requesting a special permit for the floodplain overlay district. And then, as part of this presentation, we're going to be asking for a finding for reconstruction of a non-conforming structure. So the property, you can see I have a locust plan shown. It's at the end of Huckins on the east side of Squanum. It's on Quincy Bay, and it sits between two streets, Huckins Ave and Sunrise Road. It's at the very end of this Sunrise, fronts on the water. And you can see here in the aerial photograph, just to give you a context, it's a fairly large site at the end of the road here that we're presenting this project to you. The house that exists there now is seen in this aerial photo. It's set towards Huckins Ave to the west and north of the site, and we're proposing a very similar placement of the dwelling. Now, here's just an existing conditions plan. You can see we're, through the property is a VE zone, which is a wave velocity zone. So we're staying out of that zone, but we are in an AE, which is the flood zone. We also have an easement that runs through the property for a city sewer line that runs between Sunrise and Huckins Ave. So you'll see the plan in just a moment. We're respecting that as well. So the proposed dwelling, if I toggle between the two, you can see we're very much in the same corner of the lot. And in a moment, I'm going to show you another diagram that overlays both the existing and proposed, so you can see how we're placing the dwelling. One of the things that was really important to my client, who lives on the lot just on the left side of the screen, was the view. And, you know, and Mr. Chairman, you said to him in that presentation, if you're not happy with it, you might as well buy it.
Buy it.
So he took your words and went ahead and did that. So, you know, client who lives in the neighborhood, he's, you know, wants to make sure that all the neighbors are happy. So it was really important to him that we designed a dwelling that stayed pretty much in the same placement as what was there, and that's what we have before you. So let me just show you a little bit. The green that I've outlined is the existing dwelling. You can see I've just marked some of the corners. The proposed ZBA design that was presented to you back in 2019 is the orange corners. So you can see in our design, which I've sort of outlined and read, you know, we are pushing the design back, and that was important for my client to make sure that he was being respectful to his neighbors on Sunrise, to preserve that view coming through the corner of the lot. So that's what we did here in the design. So we're, we're up against that, plus the VE and plus the easement, so there's a lot going on here. But we are holding the top right corner is basically the same as what it is now. And then, at the back of the, or, you know, at the left edge of the property, that abuts his property, we're holding 13 feet, which is the requirement for a side yard setback. The design is such that you can drive through from Huckins to Sunrise. We have a two-car garage that's pull-through, but also allows for the driveway, so if you had to pull through, if somebody was in the garage, you could. So we're keeping our disturbance high on the site and away from the water. I would want to point out, the dashed lines of the contour on that plan is a fill on the site, so we are making some modifications to the shape of the lot, and that's just so that we can get the grade to match up between the two streets and have that be flow-through. So in the city engineer's comments, you'll see, said substantial fill. I take exception to that. I mean, it's fairly minor what we're doing here for adjusting grades. So the house design is three-bedroom. We have two and a half baths, and it has a third floor. We're, so it's two and a half stories. We do have a roof deck to take advantage of the views and a small, you know, family room at the top as well. So in all, about 3,500 square feet in total of area between the three floors. There is no basement because of the flood zone. It's just a crawl space. This is the Huckins Ave elevation of the house. We're trying to keep and respect the scale of the neighborhood so that we're complimentary to the other homes in the area. And then the water side of the house has a little bit more glass with the wraparound porch on it. And then to the right on the first floor is a three-seasons enclosed screen porch. And then the Sunrise elevation with the garage on the left and then the wraparound porch on it. Again, the height from the average grade plane to the highest point is 35 feet, so we're conforming with the zoning requirements there. And then the elevation that, to the adjoining property, is this elevation here. So you can see the cut through of the dwelling. You can see we have the crawl space. The bottom of the crawl space is rated design flood elevation. All we're using that space for is to pass through some ductwork and piping. There's really nothing else that's happening there. It's a four-foot space. And then, as I mentioned in the opening remarks, it is a fully flood compliant dwelling with flow-through flood vents, allowing the water to come in and equalize in the foundation, and that's shown in the details here in this wall section that are included in your packet. So as I mentioned, we did receive the city engineer's comments, and one of the comments, the number one, the question was, how much impervious area will be increased due to this development? It's essentially the same, 13-square-foot difference between the two. And it, there's a little bit of variation between driveway footprint versus the building footprint. The, or existing condition has a larger driveway area, but they proposed has a bigger footprint, but they trade off for each other. So it's essentially the same. And then, the city engineer asked about existing site conditions plans. It was included in the packet, but we have this drawing that shows the existing conditions. We'll make sure that all the utilities are shown on that plan, too. And then, provide dimensions and grades for the paving area and the driveway entrances. So the drawing right now, or at design level, when we go for full building permit, we'll have construction grade drawings, which will have all that information on it. So for building permit, we will definitely have all of that information included in our packet. And then, fourth comment, as I mentioned before, the significant fill comment, and there will be no impact to the adjoining properties. All the grades that are being adjusted are within the site. There's no change in grade to any, you know, we have Sunrise on the bottom in the, my client's property to the, to the left, but we're not making any, any changes. It's literally just for us to be able to have a nice graded driveway to be able to pass through. Well, at that, I will turn it over to you if you have any questions for me.
I don't. I've read all these plans a few times, and little mouse told me that someone bought it that didn't like his view. So I really took a good look at it. I think you did a good job, I really do.
Thank you.
The drive-through, you know, the paving, I'm not a big fanner, but I understand it's not really a ton of it there. There's a lot of open space there, so for drainage, so that was my only worry at the time. I think you did a really good job designing this house.
Good, thank you.
I have no questions. Mr. Ray Dell?
Just because I know there's a property very close by that is used for, or was used for Airbnb. I'm assuming this is going to be the primary residence now?
That is correct, yes.
Just making everybody's fears at ease there.
Yes. Good question.
Tim, no questions?
Not at this time.
Mr. Frankel? I have no questions.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, you can have a seat. LaRoche? Does anyone here that want to speak in favor? In favor? First call?
Good evening. My name is Chris Carroll. I'm an attorney in Quincy, and I'm also an attorney for the Callanans. As you know, we spent the summer of 2019 with this COVID, with the other project, and we followed the Akins Rule, pure want of you, get of you. So we did. Two weeks later, COVID shut down the project. The Callanans love the neighborhood. They're moving forward in the new home. They'll go forward, live there for their lifetime. They love it, looking at the water and light, and it's no speculative motives. And then when they're down in their other house, we'll go on the market. Brian, Brian, because he knew that he can do the right thing when it comes to seashore properties, and he has, but it's strictly for the Callanans. I mean, we would have been here sooner, but we wanted to prepare the best for the site and what was best for the neighborhood. So here we are, and we hope to get this done and get going. So thanks for your time, as always.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Jane McKenzie, I live at 18 Sunrise.
Could you please go up there so we can keep it? Well, he's right in front of my mic, but I need it on tape.
Oh, I don't have much to say.
I'm going to say people saying stuff, and we didn't write it down. Oh, my God.
Jane McKenzie, I live at 18 Sunrise, the top of the hill. I'm the one that has this much water view.
Yeah.
I don't have any issue with this. This doesn't have, the current home really doesn't have any, like, 1880s charm to it that you would want to preserve. I'm glad Jimmy and Margaret, they posted it in their name, as opposed to, you see so many of these now being posted in the lawyer's name or the architect's name. They were straight out, they put it in their name. The only thing I do want everyone to remember is that Lot 12 and Lot 11 across the way in, on Sunrise, per, I believe it's Land Court, it says that there is a strip of beach that is reserved for the residents of Sunrise Road, so that if the concrete ramp becomes longer or all of that, that we, we can just go and sit on it, too, because it's on the strip of beach per Land Court, and it's in everybody's mortgage. It's in their mortgage, it's in the mortgage across the street, that the strip of beach is reserved for Sunrise Road residents, so. But other than that, I have no objections to this project.
I'm good, thank you. Thank you for your time. Thanks for coming tonight. Anyone else? Counselor?
Hello. Hello, everybody. Noel DeBona, 70 Chickatobbit Road. I'm in support of this project, a single family for a single family. I've known Jim for quite a while. I've been on this property back in 2020. Obviously, COVID had happened, and here they are tonight, so I'm in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeBona. Is there anyone else? Second call? Anyone else in favor? Third call? All party hearing closed. I have a letter here, has to be read into the record. Well, this is April, that's April, that's 10/25. That's a new one. That's a new one.
Mr. Chair? Okay, we reviewed this in the middle for the above referenced project and our comments are as follows. One, specify how much impervious area will be increased due to the development. Two, provide plans showing the existing site conditions. Three, provide dimensions and grades for the paving area and all driveway entrances. Four, it looks like there will be significant fill in the area near Sunrise Road. Explain how the fill will affect abutting properties. Five, upon completion of the project as-built plan, showing all utilities and building footprints need to be submitted along with a digital file. An elevation certificate should be submitted if the property is in the flood zone, which it is.
Thank you. Call and party hearing closed. If anyone opposed, they're undecided. First call? Second call? Third call closed.
I'm surprised we didn't hear from the director of butter on that.
I know. I know. I say, I don't know if I'm in favor. I'm not against. I'm going to be voting for him.
I think it's a nice project. Appreciate your patience and time and diligence. Thank you.
It's a well-done project, I'm afraid.
It'd be great. It's going to be a beautiful house and we all appreciate the consideration of the neighbors. No one shows up objecting, that's always a good thing for us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I agree.
I have a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, in case ZBA, sorry, 24-67 James Calanan for a finding and special permit, FPOD, to demolish the existing single-family dwelling and replace it with a new flood-compliant single-family dwelling on the premise numbered 179 Huckins Avenue. Quincy, I make a motion to grant the finding, special permit and flood plan.
Second.
On the motion? Stand down, all in favor?
Aye.
Pulsed. Some move. I'm grabbing stuff to go back. You've got to watch out. Did, uh... Brian, who was there on 145?
It was, I believe it was a counsel.
You were here.
Yeah, oh, who was sitting? John was here. You weren't there.
Which one? Which one, Dorchester?
Dorchester.
Dorchester. Sweet, you were here. All right. Mr. Chin, if you could sit out this one, I'm sitting in.
Yeah, because you'll have to sit in, because John wasn't here. Or John was here. John was here and is not.
I watched the whole video. So further on in tonight's business.
If everybody who just voted on Huckins complete sign,
we got you.
That would be great.
There's two sheets in there, guys.
Yep.
ZBA 2458. Joan McLaughlin and John Lehman for a variance special permit for planning to increase the current single-family home by one and a half stories. Add remove, add renovate the front and back porches. Add a rear addition and make the structure flood compliant on the premise number 145 Dorchester Street. We have to kind of represent on that. You are up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here this evening. It's Brian Donahue, Donahue Architects here in Quincy. I'm here with John Lehman and his wife Joan, who are the applicants. At the last hearing we had, there was significant testimony from us and from upper moderates of neighbors and in defense of Mr. Lehman's character and his quality as a builder. And I think the majority of people were very positive in their comments. The board requested at the last meeting that the addition that was going to be placed, which was a two-story porch in the front on Dorchester Street, be staked out and the members could have a chance to go by and take a look at it. So I know that John has done that. I, I believe that some of the members have gone by the property to look at the stakes. And we would like to stay with our design and welcome your comments, questions.
I tell you, I went down, I looked at it. Are they all in line like they said? No, they aren't. Some are out, some's about six feet, some's about three feet. I think you had a great design there last time. I watched it on TV when it happened. And I'm sitting here tonight and I'll be voting for it the way you do. I think it's a good project, it's a nice build-up. I don't think you could ask the neighborhood anything more than that.
Yeah, I don't, I, you know, I went and took another look, both up and down. And there's, there's, there's not any continuity on the street whatsoever. I mean, there's kind of continuity on that side, but it's, it's, it, once you get to the next block, it's, it's completely out of whack. So I, I was in favor before, I'll be in favor again.
I agree with the sentiments that it's, it works well with the block and the neighborhood. I'm in favor.
I, I went and looked as well, up and down, several times. Every house is different. There's a little bit of a jog off of the straight line on one. One is fully paved or fully paved. One of them has giant wooden Seattle, Washington. Everything is different there. If anything's consistent, is that they're all unique and not consistent. So I think it'll be just perfect. I'm in favor.
Yeah, I feel the same way. If you're not coming to the sidewalk, I don't have any issue with it. Whatever yacht you have, you have.
Thank you. Count a motion, please.
Yep. Mr. Chair, ZBA 24-58 Joan McLaughlin and John Lehman for a variance and special permit flood plan to increase the single-family home by one and a half stories. Add renovate front, back porches, add a rear addition and make the structure flood compliant on the premise numbered 145 Dorchester Street. Quincy, I make a motion to grant the variance and special permit.
Second.
On the motion? Stand down, all in favor?
Aye.
Pulsed. Some move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chin's in. Mr. Franklin, you want to step up, please?
Certainly.
All right. You got to sign this first. What's up?
My name is Mark Nugent. I'm here, I'm live at 151 Dorchester Street.
You had your opportunity to speak the last case.
Whoa, 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 timeout. I get what you're, you're trying to tell me, you should have a right to speak now. No, you did the last meeting, it's all in, all in the minutes. So this was the board's decision to put off the decision. Let me finish here.
Okay.
Till the board votes. You want to say something? Make, make your peace.
Okay. You not make the decision yet, right?
We already have.
Okay, all right.
All done.
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
Okay. So I'm here to listen to your decision, but you already did. So it's, John, he got the assistant population same with everyone out on the block, on this block. So he got a, I see he draw the line. He, he goes six feet from the assistant population. He goes six feet and he mark on the, on the, on the ground. And for everybody to see, I'm sure, I you, just like you say, you already saw all that. It to me, when I see the line, no problem. I see the line, it's okay. But if he got a foot, the build, the house, 40 feet, 42 feet wide, 40 feet deep, 34 feet high, more or less. Then it, when he got a foot, the five-foot stair landing by 12, three-foot stair toward to Dorchester Street. And to me, holy moly, it's looking different.
Sorry, you have the right to...
Excuse me, let me finish, please.
Let me finish, let me finish.
Okay?
It's hard to distinguish between...
I know, I know, just let me, give him a minute.
It's different. To me, it is different. So I believe we work hard. We choose to live on residence, residential zone A.
It's a single-family home.
Excuse me?
Hey, wrap it up, wrap it up. You're not going to spend all day either.
Yeah.
I got a meeting here.
Yeah, I, I understand.
You shouldn't be speaking, I'm letting you. Wrap it up.
Yeah.
Wrap up what you're, what you're excited about or what.
Okay. If you don't like me to finish, that's okay.
That I'm not going to listen to, we're all hard-working. That's not the issue.
Yeah, they're not listening.
You have an issue speaking.
But I just wanted to see...
Tell me your issue.
Is it because it's so...
Big.
Not so big.
Oh.
If it's so far...
Up.
You're far to forward to the street.
Yeah.
And block everything else.
No, it's not.
Block, block everything else.
No, we decided it wasn't. You have a right now, go sit. Go sit, and if you want to appeal it, go to the state and appeal it.
Yeah, okay.
That's your right.
All right, okay.
That's your right.
All right.
You're done here, sir.
All right, that's fine, that's fine. And I, I, how long I got to get the appeal? Where I got to appeal?
You got within 20 days.
Where I got to appeal?
Get out of the DPDW and talk to them, they'll let you know all the rules.
Okay, all right, okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matt, chairman man.
Thank you.
Lady and gentleman.
Are you calling Willow, or?
What?
Are you calling Willow?
Yes, I'm next. Yes, ma'am?
Uh, we're going to say an appeal, okay? Yeah, that's fine.
ZBA 2459 JBC, JCBT Architect LLC for variance finding permit, flip, demolish the garage and construct a three-story rear addition with a garage on the premise number 130 Wall Street.
It's usually me being the nice one.
Huh?
It's usually me being the nice one and you telling people.
Yeah, I know. I know.
Just on that, they did it for half an hour the last time.
I know, it's just, you just can't. Five minutes, I gave you quick time to speak.
We already voted.
Do you have the floor, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Jim Chen, architect of JCBT Architect, address located 606 Washington, Quincy. So during our last ZBA hearing presentation back in October, October, early October, the board members were concerned about the, the overall size of the addition. So after a discussion with the homeowner, well, they're willing to cut back 10 feet of, off of the original proposed addition on all three floors. This will, will be resulting in a reduction of 221 square feet per floor with a total area of 663 square feet reduced. So currently, the lower level has 619 square, square feet consisting of two-car garage. And the existing basement will be infill to a crossface due to the, the compliance needed for the floodplain regulation. So the first floor will have a living area of 1,456 square feet. The front portion of the existing home will be remodeled for a, for the living room, dining room and kitchen. So the rear addition portion with 675 square feet of attic space will have a family room and a home office space. The second floor addition consisting of four bedrooms and two bathrooms with an area of 1355 square feet. The area, the area of the house will, will be a total of 3,400 square feet, including the 619 square feet of garage. So the actual living space will be on 21, 2,800 square feet. The 10-feet exterior, exterior rear deck was added on the first floor with second access off of the, second means of egress, access off of the deck. This will bring the FAR to 0.65, which is excessive of 0.40. So the garage will have a, the proposed garage will have a setback of two feet back from the existing base of the building, which allows a, a wider radius turning. We currently have 22 feet wide in front of the garage door with a 14-feet driveway width. This leave, we're leaving a six-feet landscape buffer between the abutting property. We're in compliance with the height and a number of stories. We're requesting for a finding for the front yard and the, and the right side yard setback. The rear yard and the left side, and the left side is, are in compliance. Will also require special permit approval from the floodplain overlay district, from the conservation commission in the future. Thank you. And I'm open up for any questions.
What's the total length of that, that one there? I got both plans here. One's like 60-something feet, 70-something feet.
From the front to the back, we got 63.
Yeah, that's, 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 come on. You got 5,200 square feet of, of, of room there. You got no driveway, you got two parking spaces and, and you got a giant addition. Just so you know, I'm not even close to doing what you asked the board to do. Cut it back, cut it back. You can say what you want to the board, I don't know how the board feels, but that is one still huge project for that lot. Anyone, any comments, anything? I mean...
What's on the third floor, Jim?
There's no, no third floor. Just a roof.
It's just the extension.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to look at, I'm like...
But it's, it's, it's huge.
Yeah, how do you go from...
If, if it goes back, I can go 38 feet from that.
Yeah, so what's, why, why are they...
And, and the final one, it's like six. You know what I mean? Let's, let's get real here. Let's try to get something real, an addition, you know?
Like the existing is 26.
But you're taking that all the way down, all the way down that floor.
Yeah, where's, where's, where is the... Oh, so you raised the whole house? Additional four feet?
That's about three feet high.
In the back.
In the back, right.
Oh, that's the back. That's just, so this is the front. So front, my front elevation... Front elevation will stay relatively around 26?
About same, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. I was, I was like, where did we get this additional eight feet? Okay.
And then it goes back to 38.
I was just confused.
Because we're only access to the garage, so that's why we...
Yeah, yeah, so you're going to get down, because it does pitch down.
I mean, that's a small one. And the pot, where are you going to put all those people?
So it's four beds. What's it say, three beds?
Four beds.
It's four beds today?
Uh, it's three beds today.
Three beds today, yeah. It's more additional than.
Yeah, but it's the way it's played out.
No, I get it. I get it. I, I'm still single.
It's just me. I'm one vote. I don't know what you guys think. Am I gonna spend the whole night and then just do it? Or just go up front the way I feel? I'm gonna tell them.
Yeah, yeah. No, I get it.
Spend all night when, if he's got four votes, God bless him. Do it. Build it. I know when I see projects that really, you ask them to cut back, I'm still gigantic. Five or six, come on. We can do better than that. I don't think his name is gonna be like that.
I have no further questions. Do you have any questions, or?
So it's a five thousand two hundred and fifty square foot lot.
That's great.
Building is sixty feet long, roughly, right?
That's great.
Sixty-three long. This is kind of a long, a long building for that size.
Yeah, this is, the front eight feet is the, uh, the enclosed, uh, sort of a porch area.
Okay. I have nothing, no other questions.
On the last meeting, we asked you to come up with a plan, so the garage, um, so parking in the driveway wouldn't block the garage, and I don't see that that's been done.
We actually set back the, uh, the addition two feet further, so we.
So where?
So you can turn easy.
Agreed, but where, where are, you're only, you're only providing two-car parking. So you haven't added any more onsite parking. So I'll be opposed to the plan as presented.
Still Brian?
Yeah, I, I, other than making it just a shade smaller, I don't see. Just appears to be really big. I don't, you know, I mean, it's, the way it's presented. It's kind of the way I feel about it.
I mean, it could have been designed a little differently. The front could have, they could have made that, like, fit right in. I know they want a little architecture in front. I get that part. But a huge addition in the back of that place is just too much for the needs.
It's like a giant box. It'll look like a giant box.
It would. So you gotta have something to it first. Does it need to be that big for an addition? It's a two-family house.
Is that a first, um, full bathroom on the first floor as well? Is that a shower or tub in the bathroom?
That's, that's a full, uh, bathroom.
That's what this is about.
So in essence, this speaks to me more of a five-bedroom house, because the home office, next to an adjacent full bathroom, can very easily turn into a proper bedroom. So this speaks to me as a five-bedroom house with two living rooms.
So before we go any further, do you want to try to redo it again and get another date, or you don't?
Yeah, I would like to go back, uh, to have a, to client and try to reduce it even more.
January fourteenth. January fourteenth. We are straight out till January. Amazing. I know. So we have a motion for January fourteenth.
ZBA twenty-four fifty-nine, JCBT Architect LLC for variance finding and a special permit to demolish the existing garage to construct three-story rear addition with a garage on the premise number one thirty Willow Street, Quincy. I make a motion to move to January fourteenth.
Second. On the motion, standing on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. So move. Huh?
Is there opportunity for public comment on this?
Yeah, matter of fact, you want to speak, come on up. We just moved the date because it's, it's just not gonna work the way it is. But if you want to come up and speak, sure, come on. We're gonna have another date, January fourth, on the new design, so that's where you can speak out the new plan. So make it quick.
Uh, yep. My name is Taylor Campbell. I live across the street at one thirty-three Willow Street. Um, I don't have an opinion about the size of the building. Um, if it were multifamily, if it made no new additional off-street parking, I would support that. Um, with the, the size of the lot, doesn't, doesn't matter to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll see you the fourteenth. You'll have a new, new plan to look at. You can get that probably two weeks before the meeting at the clerk's office. All right, where are we here? Twenty-four?
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four, there you go. ZBA twenty-four seventy-four, Terry Patrick Foley for variance for off-street parking as it relates to the additional seats added to the establishment, four fifty-one Hancock Street Councilor.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Patrick Foley. Business address two sixty-five Willow Street. I'm the attorney for the project here tonight. I'm joined here by Jim Chen, uh, who's the architect for the project. The property we're here to discuss tonight is four fifty-one dash four fifty-three Hancock Street. Um, it is in the business B zoning district, and I think we all know it as Wheelhouse Diner. Um, the wheelhouse, as we all know it, uh, for years, traditional diner, great food, great service, an institution, um, in the Wallaston, North Quincy neighborhood, very iconic, people love it. I know myself, as a kid, you'd go down Hancock Street on a Saturday or Sunday morning, you would see a line out the door, whether it was ten degrees, ninety degrees, rain, snow, sleet, um, whatever it was, there was always people outside there, um, looking to eat. Um, the applicant bought this building about a year ago. Um, and also, I, I don't know if people are fully aware of it, um, the restaurant is attached to the sign store right next to it. Um, so what the applicant is seeking to do here tonight, um, is to change the layout of the building. Um, so when they bought it last year, it was really important to them, um, to keep the diner there. The city's changing. There's a lot of new, great stuff coming here every day. Uh, but it's also very important to keep our old, traditional, institutional, small businesses, not only surviving but thriving, um, here in the city. Um, so what the applicant is seeking to do by change of the layout is, I'm sure you're all familiar with how the existing layout is there today. Um, you walk into the diner, the, uh, the counter's right there with the, with the stools, and you have the grill, um, right in the back with a couple booths um, behind it. The existing, uh, counter, that's staying. All those seats at the counter are staying as well. Uh, but what the applicant is looking to do is the booths behind the counter, they're gonna, they're looking to move those. Um, it's a great opportunity for them to get people in off the street, um, that wait outside, um, to eat. So that's gonna be kind of a waiting area. Um, they're gonna knock the wall down inside, utilize that spot over at the sign store, put some tables and chairs over there, um, have more space for their customers, and create a more, uh, more comfortable dining experience for everybody. And plus the additional speech, seats right now, um, running a restaurant, running a diner, it's a tough business. The profit margin's very thin, um, especially now with the cost of everything going up. So those additional seats, um, will help, will help them survive and, and hopefully do very well down here, um, and just have another small business, um, in the city. Um, Jim, if you just wanna go through some of the, uh, layout.
So the, uh, front part of the Wheelhouse Diner is, uh, it's about a thousand, a little, a little more over a thousand square feet, uh, in a combination of the, uh, uh, the stores they designed, uh, for, it's about, a little bit over three thousand square feet. So we're, uh, majority of it will be, uh, considered to be modeled. So we're keeping the, the same style of breakfast area, uh, having some open ceilings in the front. The back area, kitchen, will be on the model, and we'll have a connection from the, uh, old, um, restaurant into the newer part. Connection would happen here, but it's faulty opening through, um, is a, a great difference, uh, of, uh, fourteen inch from there. Yeah, so we'll have a buckle step going down and ramp going down there. Majority of the seating, uh, will be over in this section, above forty seats. Uh, new, new accessible, um, handicap bathrooms. The, the old one was just really tight, so we'll, we'll have a new one over here, and then, uh, the commercial kitchen in the back there, that's sort of a, a ghost kitchen for under, uh, business. And then delivery will happen, um, on this side, uh, through this, um, delivery area with some storage, storage area. And then on, on to the bottom right corner here, we'll have a bakery area that's sort of served the, um, part of this, um, restaurant. And, um, there'll, there'll be two, two, uh, front door maintained on, uh, on Hayward Street, uh, toward there, but the main entrance to the restaurant will still be maintained at that address.
Okay, go in either door. Find all three doors.
All, all three doors, yes.
And Mr. Chair, I think the owner's representative's here. Would like to say a few words still.
Hey, everybody. Helen Scheider. I'm here as the owner's representative. Just to simplify, for those of you that have been into the diner before, so right at the, uh, front, where the glass windows are, there's booths there. The booths have been there for a million years. Then you have the, all the stools that are around the counter. So essentially, that front area by the glass window, there's gonna be some bench seating if you're waiting for a seat, if you're waiting for takeout. It's too crowded in there. Um, it's, you know, if I could tell you about the conditions inside, it's, it's atrocious. Um, so what we're looking to do is keep the traditional diner. It's actually gonna be called The Diner, very simple. Um, and we're gonna, we're looking to move what was the booth seating to the back into where the sign place is now. But still keep the same feel, so we're gonna have that counter space. So people like to see the cook at the griddle. Um, you're gonna be able to see that from both sides. So as we kind of push everything back a little bit, we're gonna bring outside of the griddle, you know, the kind of fry cook and stuff that's right in front of you, any of the prep work, any of that stuff, that's gonna be pushed to the back. So what we're doing is replacing the booth seating that was right up front with table seating on the other side. Um, Jim and both, and Pat also mentioned kind of a bakery area in the back. So we are gonna do our own in-house baking, so pastries, breads, all those kind of things. That's gonna be there. Um, so it's really just a pushback. So the main reason we're here tonight is, um, we're asking for some relief on the parking. So we're looking to add eight additional seats. The, the restaurant has been accommodating, I think it's forty-two, um, seats. Mr. Conlon advised me that, although I couldn't find anything, Mr. Conlon told me that, uh, what he can see in the records is it's thirty-two seats.
Yeah, maybe.
But it's been operating as forty-two for the last thirty-plus years. So we're asking for an increase of eight seats. It's, you know, the, the whole goal is to maintain the diner in this section of the city. Um, there's heavy foot traffic there. As you may know, there's the Vane Street parking lot. There's also some additional lots in the back that can be utilized with people.
Long is the lot behind?
So you have, um, you have the Wheelhouse Diner.
Yep.
Then you have the Sign Shop, Randy Haritz. Then you have the roadway that passes through, which is the right-of-way C mark behind that. Then if you go over to the other side, you have Granite Lofts and, um, South Cove. Then you have the big parking lot that serves what used to be, um, well, it's now the Christopher Arrow, um, Learning Center. So there's that big lot there, um, in the backside of that.
Are you?
So if you're on Hayward Street.
Are you building any parking onsite for you?
No, we have, no, we need to keep these. There's no room for additional parking.
There's no room to buy any next door or?
Well, no. No, it's an existing two-family immediately to our left.
I know, but the rest is completely different.
Our intention, our intention was to try and purchase additional property, but for those of you that frequent social media or the Patriot Ledger, you may have seen some of the trials and tribulations of the last year. Um, so we were unable to obtain the property next door. Um, they all of a sudden thought that the price that we were offering them was substantially, uh, below market based on kind of misleading information that was put out there.
So the sign business is gonna be up?
Sign business has been closed since Randy died a couple of years ago. Yeah, there will be no sign business.
No sign business.
No.
Where's the nearest parking on the main drive?
So, so Vane Street, so, but you have that cut through right beside, um, Murphy, Tool &amp; Die. So there's a walkway that takes you right to the back of the Vane Street parking lot.
There's probably.
Yeah, yeah, it is. I don't know how far it is.
Uh, it's about three, it's about three buildings deep if you cut through. Yeah.
A lot of people utilize it too.
Three hundred feet, yeah.
Go to Assembly, people utilize Vane Street.
Yeah, that's what I use it, yeah. That's a problem.
Just never filled.
Huh?
Never had trouble getting parking. It really, it really happened.
We're parking the short end of Billings. That's what I do. Back in the old Murphys and Walshes and Kelly's days.
I'm always astonished that they on-street parking available.
They find it.
Like, it's just, you know, like Hayward, Hayward Street, like.
They define it or don't grow.
When C Mart was opening, you know, the lofts had just been put in Hayward Street, there was a lot of parking on Hayward Street, which created a problem because of truck delivering. They, they, I believe they have hours for delivery that are off-hours of probably this. There's no parking on Hayward Street, I believe.
There's no parking on Hayward Street.
So like, it's not like you're gonna inundate neighbors at Granite Lofts with additional parking that they weren't using already.
What do you, what do you, what are your hours gonna be and what days?
Uh, well, it's all still in the works, but, so we're not gonna open as early as it previously did. We're looking at a six AM start. Um, initially, we're gonna be open six to three. We, when we apply to the city for our, um, business certificate, we're, we're gonna ask for extended time, because if we increase to dinner hours later in the year, but primarily, I can guarantee you, because I'm the one that's gonna be there, for the next year, it's gonna be six to three. Um, but we will anticipate in the future, based on success, remaining open for dinner. I don't.
Then you go and you'll ask for, for more hours?
No, I, I can tell you we won't.
In a year from now, you're not going to?
No, we're, I mean, the longest we'll go is through a dinner hour, not, there'll be no late evening stuff.
I didn't say it. What's dinner hour? Six?
Yeah, five, six, seven. Yeah, so I would anticipate.
That's the problem, but.
Six to seven.
You're telling me now, six in the morning until three in the afternoon are gonna be your hours, and then you will go back and ask for longer hours.
No, so what I'm.
You're gonna do it with your application?
To, at the application, I'll ask for six to seven, but our primary hours will be six to three.
Yeah, I'd have to go look at that whole area again. I thought you were adding parking with this. I, I got a problem with that. If you're gonna be there at seven at night, there's, there's, there's other people that have already been there. They have their, their people, and you just... I mean, it's another Panera Bread you're putting in there, but it's down the street, so.
No, I mean, it's.
Just to me, it's just me.
Respectfully, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's nothing like a Panera Bread.
Panera Bread has their own parking. You don't. That's the difference, so just so you know.
I, I appreciate it.
I would ask the board, let's go get a, let's, let's take a good look around that community and see what we got for parking and make sure it's right, or they can borrow on it tonight if they want. That's just my two cents to this, I think. I didn't look at the parking. I thought you guys had part of that lot that was in back. I thought that was yours.
There is additional company. Right, so we have the parking spaces in front, and then, uh, there are areas that are striped out in the right-of-way behind the building.
I, I thought you had real spots in that back. I thought that was the signs parked in the back.
It's on the ri- right-of-way.
I'm just gonna, not to step on your toes or anything.
No, no, do yours.
There's plenty of restaurants where, I mean, like the China, for example, we expanded that and increased, and, you know, largely have not dealt with any parking issues since.
We don't know that. I know I've looked up there a couple times. I can't get in there, so I take off.
But you make a business decision to not shop at that business.
Right, I go somewhere else.
Yeah, that's, you know, that, that's their business risk, not our risk on the, on our. I'm more worried about our butters, and then, and if you look at from a.
That's what I'm worried.
Well, if you look at it from a residential standpoint, of where people would park and inundate neighborhoods, there's, there's no where to do that there. Like the street.
I'm not saying that.
No, I'm just saying.
But you can't keep putting in restaurants and make a bigger restaurants when there's no place to park. We have to look at it and say, at one point, we are full. We, we've done the max restaurants. Get something else. Get something else where people just go in and out, in and out, in and out, not sit there for.
Any business you have is gonna have a challenge there with.
I know.
And respectfully, we're talking about eight seats.
Sitting down eating is a difference.
Alan, just, uh, your application said twenty seats in addition. Is it eight or?
It's an additional eight seats.
Because it's discrepancy with the city.
Oh.
The city had thirty-two when we put the application, and we were going back and forth with Jim.
Okay.
And we had it forty-two. They've had it for forty-two for years. He told us to put thirty-two in the application. Um, so.
So it's really eighteen additions?
Eight.
They, the eight seats.
It's eight seats.
Okay.
What, what will be the total seat count as proposed?
Fifty.
Yeah.
Now, Mr. Chair, if, um, if it was straight six to three, would your opinion be different?
Of course it would. It would. And then come back later when you're there and you wanna go more seats. Then you have a hearing and people talk about it, and the board will listen to you. Maybe they'll go, no, there's no room for you to go next. I don't know. That's up to them then. Would it be up to me? How I would feel? I would feel comfortable at six to three. No one's coming home from work. They're probably already gone.
You don't have the conflict with the other restaurants that are running the lunch and supper.
Right, exactly. And I feel more comfortable, like, well, I can hear there's plenty of room for all of it. And then if they want, in a year from now, come back to the board and ask the board, their license board, that they can stay open long.
So, Mr. Chair, if we were gonna change the hours in the year, we just go to licensing board?
Yeah.
For that, that wouldn't be his only.
Right? Wouldn't that work?
If that's your comfort level, then, then we're willing to change it to six to three.
The board might say, I know everything down there, every street, where the parking, yeah, you guys have plenty of room down. Great.
I'm happy to change it to six to three if that's the comfort level.
That's a my comfort level, that's all.
And then the year, if we wanna go set and go to licensing?
Whatever, yeah. You wanna do it three months. After you get in, you're up and running, things going good, and you say, you know, I wanna move it, go to licensing board and ask them. But if I get your word, six to three, I'm in.
Six to three.
Aye.
Throw it back on.
Throw it back on. We're back on.
Just went on a big circle.
Well, that's all right. Sometimes you gotta take that long ride to get there.
Welcome back.
Welcome back.
I have no questions. I.
Any questions?
No, just it was on that number of seats, so it's fifty seats total. Let's just count it at that.
Yeah.
I think your overflow parking is gonna be a C Mart, very close to. People coming and going all the time. It's a madhouse for there. I drop people off there almost every morning, and six o'clock to three o'clock is still a madhouse. So that's where they're gonna park.
Russell, the expectation too, like when you talk to the owner, is this is meant for people that are waiting. We don't by any means think that increasing the seats is gonna stop bringing all sorts of new people here to try the restaurant. It's just gonna be the people that are using it before they close down, and it's, you had a line down the street, around the corner some days. This is gonna be able to utilize those people, get them a seat rather than having a line, getting them off the street.
Get them off the sidewalk and out of the weather. That's really what.
You're gonna get an English muffin or something quick before the.
The menu is gonna be quite similar to what it was at Willow.
Very similar, yes. There are marginal changes from it.
But I agree, if, if you keep it at the six and then give the butters a chance in the future to object if you do go for.
More than happy to.
Longer hours, I think that would be fair to any butters, but at the number of seats that they're looking for, I think it's okay.
Uh, no questions at this time.
Yeah, I'm good.
I'm good. I went around circle. I'm back, I'm back. You can have a seat.
Thank you.
Does anyone here wanna speak in favor of the diner? Please step up. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Taylor Campbell. I live at one thirty-three Willow Street. I've been a regular at the Wheelhouse Diner for many years now.
Yeah.
Um, and I just, I wanna say I wholeheartedly approve, uh, more restaurant capacity without more parking. Um, I, I live in the area. Uh, I walk there. I, not because it's closed now, but I, I used to walk to the Wheelhouse Diner or bicycle there. Um, if there's any more parking, it'd just be a small bike rack. Um, and I think that we're nowhere near being full, uh, with restaurants. I wish there were more places I could walk to, more small establishments I could walk to, or, uh, and, and fewer places, uh, for cars. Uh, there's already a gigantic parking lot right next to it at the, at the ninety-nine Ranch and, uh, and stuff.
You must be hungry. You must be hungry.
I, I am hungry, in fact.
You must be hungry. Can't wait.
Anyway, that's all. More, more, more establishments, less parking. Thank you.
Appreciate you.
That's what they did in Cambridge, right? Don't we want no parking? Anyone else, second? Wanna speak in favor? Second call, third call, all of our hearing closed. Got a letter here from the DPW. We have reviewed the above referenced project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call closed. Have a motion, please.
Do you show it this time?
I think, I think we gotta throw it.
ZBA 2474 Attorney Patrick Foley for a variance for off-street parking as it relates to additional seats being added to the establishment on the premise numbered 451 Hancock Street, Quincy, and make a motion to grant the variance.
They will reopen 6:00 to 3:00.
Six to 3:00.
Second.
On, on the motion, stand that all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, closed, so moved. If you guys could just sign this and leave, fine.
Yes. I like to figure I have the influence in here by being so hard to track down.
So hard to track down?
Kathleen, was that the reason for this change?
Yeah.
Can't find him for months. Can't find him for months.
What country are you in? What state are you in?
Can you do a dark sign?
And moves the final decision to start off as quickly as possible.
Perfect, yeah.
115, 115. ZBA 2416, Bing Zhang for a variance and finding to repair structural defects to the existing front porch and close it will result in a three-season unheated front porch while blending the new with the existing facade on the premise number 115 Willow Street. Yep, kind of representative.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jen. I represent RB Group and Dennis Caldwell Architects. I'm also representing the client, which is my neighbor, the Kyong's family.
What's our address? You didn't give me your.
My address is 119 Willow Street, right next door.
119 Willow, okay.
Thank you, Jen.
Yep. Um, just basically, they just wanted to use the front porch as an enclosed porch, just putting up some windows for their kids. I see them running around all the time in the winter too, so.
They like it closed in, I think, too. That's part of our culture, sort of closing the room coming in.
Yes.
One thing I wanna know is those, those facade, your facade that's there, does that have asbestos?
We don't know yet.
I think it is, but.
Okay.
You gotta have a check before you do anything there.
Yeah, so.
That, that building might have asbestos shingles when I looked at it, so. I don't know what they did in the back. I know they built a thing in the back already and built the deck. It was already, I don't think they touched the side, but maybe they did, I don't know, but someone's gonna look at that.
Yeah, I had Paul, the building inspector, he went by to took a look at that also already.
Yeah, but you gotta have it tested, I mean.
Yep.
Those, usually those kind of tiles, I grew up, were asbestos.
Yeah, I have a property over in North Quincy that has asbestos tiles.
And it's a nightmare, it's a nightmare.
Oh, yeah.
And getting attacked and breaking into them and.
Yep.
And you gotta bring bags and companies to come in, so. That's my only beef with that whole thing. I think it'll look good, but I really have no questions on what you're doing there. The back looked nice looking at that. It looked like that could look nice.
Property's well-kept, well-retained, you know, in honor of Mr. Covas, I will absolutely approve this. I will call him and tell him I did.
I'll call him and report you.
So, Jen, are you adding any utilities up there?
No, the only thing that we'll probably be adding out there is probably the lights for the front porch or anything, but nothing else. The only encroachment I see is just the lane to get up to the, to the door, to the enclosed door.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you have to extend that landing now.
Exactly, yeah.
No questions.
I have one. It says here that you're, you gotta look at the structural defects. Do you know that there's structural defects there?
From what I, Paul and I walked through, it was pretty bad.
Pretty bad?
Really good.
I mean, I saw a couple of planks.
Yeah, so, yeah, it will be probably bad. Once they, the guys rip it up, then we'll see more of the bottom, so. Paul's thinking that we might have to redo the whole thing.
Yeah.
And, and above you, there's a cracked tile too.
Yes.
You can have a seat. Does anyone like to speak in favor?
Thank you.
A neighbor. It's the third time I've gone.
It's a busy street for you tonight.
You put three things that are relevant to me on this agenda, so.
Not too much.
Is this a trifecta?
Name and address for the record.
So, my name is Taylor Campbell. I live at 133 Willow Street. It's just a few doors down from 115. I actually have a question, if I may, is that. My question is, why does this require a variance? What zoning rule does it break?
He's enclosed on his front porch, and he's infringing on the front of the building, coming to the sidewalk.
So, it's, yeah, it's proximity, it's, it's the proximity to the front setback, because you have to come a few feet forward. And also, in our zoning code, we have an enclosure. It, it requires a variance, so it's just written into our code.
But people could just cover their porch, do it.
Make additional living space.
Take the inside wall up, make the house bigger.
Okay.
So, we have to know what you're doing with your house, too.
Interesting, okay. So, I, I reviewed the houses on Willow Street. Of the 26 houses that have porches, 12 of them already have enclosed porches.
Yep.
I think it, it strikes me as absurd that it, anyone has to come forward with this.
That was kinda why it happened, so, you know, it was to make sure we put proper controls around it at the time, you know.
And we've said no to people. The structure of them was so beautiful and they wanna just enclose it. And it goes, oh my God, you just ruined your house. The house is worth $50,000, $100,000 less than what it is if you enclose that porch. I mean, you gotta see some of the woodwork on some of these porches. Gorgeous. I mean, simply gorgeous, and they just wanna, whoa, what are you doing?
Yeah, it was just, it was just, you know.
Think of what you're doing before you do it. And they didn't realize that kind of money was involved.
Classic government overreach.
It was what it was. It was really, I don't believe that at all.
I'm just messing with you.
Yeah, I think the customer, the more persons getting screwed.
No, it was just.
Someone told them to cover their porch.
If you came here 10 years ago, that we had 10 of these a night.
Yeah, I know.
And it was, it was just becoming something that needed controls around it, that's why, so.
I mean, I think if, if someone has a beautiful woodwork, they wanna destroy on their own property.
It's their choice.
It's their own property.
But you gotta explain to them, do you realize what you're doing to your house?
Sure, sure, but.
And then, if he says, I should even give you a couple of weeks to go check it out. Your house is gonna be worth a lot less if you enclose those two porches.
Anyway, I, I approve, and I, I think it's unfortunate that you have to go through a zoning appeal for zoning board.
And they put on this, and they put on that.
The city council can make changes to the zoning rules. I would urge you to call, contact your counselor and talk about the absurdity of some of these rules so that things don't have to end up in front of us, right? Then, then you saved me an hour to go play with my kids before bed.
That sounds great. I'll get out of your way now.
No, no, you're fine, man. No, I'm just, I'm just messing around. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else speak in favor?
I can text you Dan Mitten's number right now.
Anyone else? Second call, third call, all of our hearing closed. I got a letter here from the DPW. They have reviewed the above referenced project and have no comments. Is there anyone here opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call closed. I'll be voting in favor.
In favor.
I'm in favor as well.
Just put it, put in the motion addition. Thanks, yeah, above checking for asbestos shingles they might be in.
Mr. Chairman, ZBA 2416, Jin Zhang, for a variance and finding to repair any structural defects to the existing front porch. Close it to result in a three-season unheated front porch while blending the new with the existing facade on the premise number 115 Willow Street and verifying the presence or lack thereof of asbestos tiles. I make a motion to grant the variance and finding.
Second.
On the motion, stand that all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Closed, so moved. Uh, there's two left. Someone wanna go?
Sure.
Mr. Chance of Shaw. First one, first one, guys.
Their words were out of your mouth.
I know, he knew where I was going. When he stops talking, yes. You already hit the auto start on the car. All right. Give them a second.
350 Granite Street was supposed to be represented by Mr. Allen Kim, and he is a deaf member of the family. And so, the owner, I believe, will be represented himself.
ZBA 2418, Joe Allen from Jackson for variance to finish the basement with only insulation and drywall to make it usable but not habitable on the premise 350 Granite Street. Did you take notes?
Yes.
You sure?
Do you want it again?
I know, I was watching. You have the floor.
Name and address for the record.
Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Jonathan Santiago. Address, 350 Granite Streets, Quincy, Mass.
Yeah, what do you wanna do there?
Uh, we just wanna be able to finish to have it be usable. We have our hook-up for the laundry downstairs and also for additional storage spaces.
What do you have for floor down there? Concrete?
Concrete.
All right, what, what's in the walls? Nothing, just stubs?
Believe it, uh, correct, currently, right now.
I have no questions. It does mean no beds, you get it?
Correct, yeah, so we'd have.
Cousins sleeping down there, something happened. It's not inhabitable.
Not habitable, no beds down there. Office, laundry, storage for the wife's shoes.
I know that feeling. I have, I have no questions. Oh, she knows. I made her throw out a bunch last week.
Five?
Five? No.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. Any questions?
No, thank you.
No, sir.
No, I'm good.
No, no, that was another one.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, it was up on the.
Little Hill or something.
The Hester Hill?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, is there anyone want, you can have a seat. Anyone wanna speak in favor? Right. Second call, third call, all of our hearing closed. DPW has reviewed the above referenced project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call, closed. I'll be voting in favor. Just, if I'm wrong, if I'm wrong, that's fine.
I'm in favor.
In favor.
In favor.
We have a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, ZBA 24-18, Gerard Ellington Jackson for a variance to finish the premise, finish the basement with only insulation and drywall, make it usable, not habitable on the premise number 350 Granite Street, Quincy, and make a motion to grant, grant the variance.
On the motion, stand that all in favor?
Right.
All right, closed, so moved.
Sorry for your friends lost.
All set. You're good. Not that, you, you'll get a copy of it.
Okay.
Then you gotta put it in your deed.
Okay.
Oh, I thought I did. Oh, just give me the taxi.
Can you give me two seconds?
Yeah, all right, we'll take a five-minute break.
Sorry.
No, it's fine. No, it's fine.